There are speakers out in that foyer, but you might be better off sitting down in the generations room. There's still a couple of seats up front. There's five seats in the front row if somebody wants to come up here. You can come up front. There are seats. There's three seats over that way. One more seat up front. Anybody want to come up? All right, looks like we got, have everybody seated. We're going to call this hearing to order.
Tom, give me a minute. One more minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. That was quick. Just waiting for the videographer.
Tom, you go ahead. I'm going to go back to my office.
Okay, we'll call this hearing. We'll open it up. Our first item is for roll call. Please let the record show that supervisors Barney, Guzio, Cassiola, Fisher, and Sifroni are in attendance. Also, our township engineer, Dan Dazeroth, and our solicitor Gretchen Moore, and our assistant manager, Jack King. Would you please, I think you signed up to get the chance to make comments. Even if you didn't get a chance to sign in, if you want to make some comments or ask questions, you're going to have to come up to the microphone, but you have to be sworn in first. So would you please rise for her to have you sworn in? Now, you can sit down. Just raise your hand for the her. Thank you for that. There are three public hearings, I mean, one public hearing, but we have three items of, in our ordinance to consider. The first one is actually amending, it's a proposed ordinance to add review procedures and sections to improve notices. For our section 240 12A. The second item that we need to, addresses an ordinance amending the section of the township, section 240 39, that adjusts borders of the oil and gas overlay district. And Dan will talk about that one. And also, the final one, which most of you are here for, is the ordinance considering amending different sections in the oil and gas ordinance. So, I was asked to make one announcement first, that the township has no new drilling applications for, or pending applications for any drilling. I know a lot of people were, thought that this might have to do with a new application for drilling. And even Range has indicated to us that they have no particular plans for any new well pads. Not that they might not in the future, but if you're here for a concern about new well pads, there are none pending with the township. And as I mentioned, if you didn't get a chance to sign in, we're going to call, Carol's going to call people who signed in in order they signed in to get to speak first. And then if you haven't signed in, just you can get in the queue over there and you will get a chance. We do plan on closing the hearing at nine o'clock and we will reconvene next May 8th at six o'clock here at the township building. So we're going to try to close right around nine o'clock to let everybody get home. So the first thing, Dan, did you want to go first?
I think Gretchen was going to say a couple of words.
Okay.
Sure, yeah. I'll, I'll get us started. Mr. Chairman, did you want to run through the rules and procedures before?
We passed it out.
You did.
Yeah, I don't know if everybody got to see it. I'll mention a couple of things. We are going to limit the comments to three minutes. Fair to everybody to give everybody a chance. I think, did everybody get a copy of that? Okay, pass it around. If somebody next to you doesn't have one, just maybe you can read up on it. Go ahead Gretchen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we had a lot of questions leading up to tonight about zoning ordinances in general and the process of enactment. So I wanted to just kind of give a brief presentation at the outset about, you know, why we're here, how we got here, and then some of the key structural changes that are being proposed to the oil and gas amendment. So that, kind of basic zoning 101 for everyone. Zoning ordinances are a restriction on land use by right. They are, they are used to promote health, safety, and welfare. They are used sometimes to protect certain types of land, such as agricultural uses, to prevent overcrowding from land blight and things like that. So zoning ordinances themselves require a balancing of considerations because it is a restriction on private property rights. And municipalities obviously have the ability to make decisions about zoning in their municipality. This particular board, your elected officials, are the ones who make legislative decisions because these are changes to laws that will impact everybody in the municipality. Now, when a board enacts an ordinance, the ordinance is presumed valid upon enactment, but can be challenged for a variety of grounds and reasons, such as due process, equal protection, exclusionary zoning. There's a laundry list of reasons why someone may challenge a zoning ordinance. So what the board wants to, wants to do, and we strive to do, is get it right in terms of the balancing and make sure they're not enacting something that is going to be challenged. And that's not to say any zoning ordinance can be challenged, because every ordinance, of course, could be challenged. But, you know, they had a bit of a balancing that they are going through in this process. And there are a lot of considerations to balance. There are a lot of points of views on both sides. And this public hearing is the process for which people can give their opinions, their comments on a proposed ordinance. And then the board will take that back, consider that, and decide whether or not they want to make any additional proposed changes. And then, as the chairman said, there will be another hearing, at least one more in May. And a new, an updated ordinance may be circulated before that hearing if the board decides to make some additional changes. So the process of enacting an ordinance, it really starts with the board making a decision that they want to propose changes, which they have here. They've listened to the community and determined there are some issues that they want to address. At that point, then, a bunch of things can take place. We can review model ordinances, we can review ordinance from other municipalities. We can draft new language that the board might have if they have specific concerns that are unique to the board. So then that takes place. Then there's a bit of this balancing of, and risk assessment about the validity of the ordinance. And then we get to this public hearing portion, which is where we are tonight. Where the board, again, will hear from the public, then they will decide whether they want to make any additional changes to the proposed ordinance. And then ultimately, there is a vote on that ordinance. And the majority of the board will decide whether or not to enact a new ordinance, at which time it becomes law. Now, this ordinance was advertised as a pending ordinance, meaning that this ultimate ordinance, wherever it lands, with any applications that take place or come into the township between when it was advertised and when it's ultimately decided upon are subject to this ordinance as it finally is resolved. Here in Cecil Township, the township had existing ordinances to address oil and gas. They had an ordinance from 2011. They also have an oil and gas overlay district. That's, that was how the township chose to address the where in terms of oil and gas drilling. There are multiple ways to address the where. You can do it by district, you can do an overlay district. This board has currently proposed to keep the overlay district, but increase the setbacks of that district. And Dan Dazeroth is going to show you all what that map looks like, go through some scenarios. And then I will walk through just some of the major changes in this ordinance compared to the existing ordinance. And at that time, then, we will open it up to public comment.
Thank you Gretchen.
So as Gretchen has said, this is an overlay district. And what we did for the township was to analyze what the ordinance says, which is there's certain distances from protected structures and other things like schools that have to be maintained. So we used the township mapping system to analyze what a map of the township would look like and the particular areas that could represent where oil and gas activities could occur. So this is based upon the 2024, there's a coverage for structures that was available that we were able to use. This is the current map. I'm just showing this briefly. If you did a current map of where the ordinance was at 500 feet, all of the shaded areas in tan represent areas where oil and gas activities could occur. The, the next map that I'm going to pull up would be where the ordinance actually landed, which is at 1,000 feet. So you can see that the shading of the tanned areas, although they're, they're spread out over the township, they've decreased in terms of size. And the, and the query related to the map was that we would look for parcels that were a minimum of four acres, which would be big enough to build a well pad being a distance 1,000 feet from a protected structure. So again, this is, this is where the map landed. You might say, and the township did look, at a further distance of 1,500 feet away. And this isn't what was approved, but you can see that the area significantly decreases. There's only a couple of areas that end up meeting that criteria within the township. So one final thing that, that we took a look at was, you know, what if it wasn't, if it wasn't an overlay, what if you just allowed it, like, let's say, in an industrial zone? So the township has industrial zones within the township. They're, all of the areas that are, they're in the blue area, or the dark blue, or the light blue area. So as it turns out, the, the areas that... Sorry, I think this is a cleaner map.
Dan, excuse me one second.
This is a cleaner map. This is a cleaner map.
Dan, excuse me one second. I just want to make an announcement. I guess some people might have parked over at the Dollar General lot. The Dollar General owners had called the police because they have no place for the customers to park. So if you parked over there, I think you better try to find another spot.
So, so I'm sorry, this is, this is more clear. So you can see the limited areas in the township. This map, this represents the industrial zoned areas within the township. So the blue, the light blue, or the dark blue areas represent industrial zones. It's not, not a large area within the township. But if you actually look at areas within 1,000 feet of an industrials, in an industrial zone that are four acres or more, and, or 1,000 feet from a structure, it really owns, ends up only being, there's actually only two, two areas, I believe. One is here, and there was another one here, but maybe that, oh, there's a very small strip right here. So there's two areas within the township where that could occur. But if you went any further than 1,000 feet, it would basically say that you couldn't do activities anywhere. So I'm just going to go back to the, to the map that actually represents what's in the current pending ordinance. So this would be the, this would be the areas that are marked in tan where, where oil and gas activities could occur. And, and of course, this map is, is dynamic in that if somebody comes tomorrow and puts a structure up, it could change the map, and that's covered in the ordinance. Also, that, that, you know, when somebody actually would submit for any oil and gas activity and application, they would actually have to do real mapping and make sure that they comply with the things that are in the ordinance. I think that's all I need to say. Did I miss anything Gretchen?
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
That's it, for me.
I just want to announce something. Our, I said it earlier at our meeting that we have three ordinance to discuss. I couldn't read my first one, and I didn't read it properly. I spilled hand sanitizer on it. It says, it's an ordinance amending the following sections of the township ordinance, section 240 12A, that the board of supervisors has discretion to act on proposed ordinances and amendments, and to review procedures and sections, and to improve notice procedures. I mean, that sounds complicated. But if you, if you're here to ask any questions about that, you'll be free to address that also, in addition to oil and gas. So we're going to, I'm going to let people start. Well, first off, the board members, have you seen it? Say it again. Oh, yes. I thought you were done.
No, I was going to do the summary of the ordinance.
Oh, please.
Okay. And just to clarify also, on that third ordinance that we're here for tonight, basically, that talks about rezoning procedures. So when you come to the board seeking a rezoning, it just clarifies that, because that's a legislative act, it's not quasi judicial, this board does not have to act on a rezoning request. They may. So we clarified the ordinance so that that is clear, that just because you've requested rezoning doesn't mean this board has to hold a hearing. They certainly can, but they don't have to. Okay. So the chairman wanted me to also give a brief summary of just some of the proposed changes to the ordinance. I'm not going to run through all of them, but I'll go through some of the structural changes to this amended ordinance. And I'll just say for the record, you know, I've been doing and drafting ordinances a long time. I've never seen a perfect ordinance. This one is certainly not perfect, and I'm sure we will hear a lot of comments about concerns or things that you noticed in the ordinance, and that's what this process is for. That's why you have hearings when you have these zoning amendments, and we can get input and consideration. So some of the changes and updates to the ordinance, the definitions section was updated. There is a declaration in this ordinance, as there was in the last one, that oil and gas activities are a conditional use within the overlay district. That did not change, but the overlay district itself has changed. The conditional use application process was modernized a bit and updated. There is a new notice section that has been significantly expanded from the prior notice section in terms of different types of notices that are required and to whom during different stages of drilling and different activities. There's a hazard section, which requires some training program, sharing of the preparedness plan by the operator, MSDS lists, establishment of safety zones and emergency procedures. There is a citing and setbacks section that obviously has changed now with the different setbacks that, that are in this ordinance. An access section discussing criteria for the access roads that would be conducted related to the activities. There's a more, a broader section that discusses traffic impacts, requiring a traffic impact study, going through the traffic pattern approval process, route decisions, coordination with schools, bonding and maintenance agreements on township roads, road crossings, signage. So that's, it's a lot heavier in the traffic control areas. Then there are different impact analysis and studies that are now being required under this ordinance, including environmental impact analysis, and air quality study, hydrological study. There are some bonding and reports required when seismic testing activities are undertaken. There's a water withdrawal plan, soil testing. There is an improved section on buffering and screening. There's a discussion requirements about the storage of equipment. Some of the biggest changes take place in the noise section. So there's a section on noise, dust, vibrations, and odors. What we've been hearing from residents in the township was, especially with the last round of drilling, a lot of complaints about noise levels. What we've understood through having discussions about this is that a lot of those noise concerns are really the lower level, what's called DBC noise, the kind of noise that you feel, but might not meet the higher frequency noise that is currently addressed in the ordinance. So the ordinance currently addresses DBA noise. That's the higher frequency. This new ordinance addresses both DBA and DBC, DBC being the lower weighted frequencies. And it changes the ordinance, the noise measurements. So whereas before, there was either an ambient baseline or a baseline that was set, I think at 50 or 55, now it is an ambient baseline. And then there is noise that can go above the ambient during different phases of drilling and at different times. So that's probably one of the biggest changes. The insurance section was updated. Hours of operation limitations are proposed in this ordinance currently for drilling, drilling portions, everything except for fracking currently. That is new. There's a reclamation section, and again, it's not governing how reclamation takes place. We certainly understand there are reclamation procedures set forth by DEP and others. But it sets forth time periods in which to do it and asks for financial security, so bonding to ensure that there is compliance with that reclamation. There's some complaint provisions in terms of how to address complaints. And incorporation of the UDO performance standards, which I think was a given before, but we made it specific and explicit that the UDO performance standards that apply to all land uses in the township also equally apply to this particular use. And then there were some additions to specifically address how expiration happens. So once you apply, and if there is an approval, at what point does that approval expire? So we tried to address it more directly in this ordinance because it was unclear. You know, I think previously we had some issues with that. So that's a very basic structural overview. I'll turn it back to the chairman to start taking comments.
First of all, are there any comments from the board members on what you heard from Dan and Gretchen? All right. Carol, would you start calling names out?
Chairman, I have the list here.
You have the list, okay.
What I'm, what I'm going to do by way of procedure, I'm going to call the people in order as they signed in. If they decide not to talk, then I'll call the next one.
But please ask if you start a queue over there, so we don't have to wait for everybody to go through the aisles as they get back and forth. Yeah, it does say that. And it, make sure, they are township residents, that's Carol.
That's correct. The rules for tonight are on the podium. Just call your attention to the fact that it's a three-minute time limit. And somebody will remind you if you're getting close. Linda Kappel.
You don't have to worry about that yet. You'll get a chance.
When you come up, before you speak, you can sign, sign in from here.
Everyone will get a chance. But please, if you signed up and you know you're on that list, would you start getting along the wall there so we can get people moving through, please?
All right. Linda Kappel, Lynette King, Lynn Pape, Laurel Ziemba, and Debbie Augustine. Thank you, Linda. She's not going to say anything.
My name is Lynn Pape, L-Y-N-N-P-A-P-E. I live at 194 King Road, also have a home at 3257 Rising Road. I understand the ordinance that you're trying to change is not going to actually mitigate any of the current problems because the oil and gas wells and the pads that are already set fall under the old ordinances. So anything that you do now, is that going, will that change anything that is currently going on?
Generally, no. This ordinance is for future pads and future applications.
So it's not going to mitigate any of the problems for the people that are currently having problems. And I do understand the noise, because I can hear the noise, since they put the sound walls up. But people have said that Range isn't reacting to people. They're not trying to help. They have tried to help. They have put up the sound walls, they've put up the blankets. I know on Rising Road, they've repaired at least one yard for the road. And people complained about them using Rising Road. And if you think Range using Rising Road was a problem, if you do zone that commercial, which I know you have talked about, your traffic on that road is going to be horrendous. And any zoning ordinance that you do, I would ask that you make it across the board for anybody coming in here for commercial. Because you're going to have the same problem if you get a Walmart or a gas station along Rising Road, and the lights are shining in houses, and the traffic is unbearable. So whatever you do, you can't make it just for your oil and gas. You have got to look at everything that may be happening in the future for your ordinance, for your commercial.
All right. Thank you. Come on, somebody, come on.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on the proposed draft amendments, section 240 39 and 240 61. Laurel Ziemba. My name is Laurel Ziemba, 1001 Buck Run Road, Cannonsburg, PA.
Are you?
Z-I-E-M-B-A.
Are you representing yourself or Range Resources?
Both. My name is Laurel Ziemba, and I'm the Director of Public Affairs for Range Resources. I'm a resident of Cecil Township with my husband Chad and my 11-year-old daughter Leah, who is also a student over at Cecil Intermediate School, right across the road. Tonight, my comments are focused on the proposed ordinances that are the subject of this hearing. I know there is a related but separate conversation happening in the township about Range's current operations. I do not intend to speak to our current operations tonight other than to say Range is listening to the township and its residents about our current operations. We continue to conduct operations in compliance with state law and local ordinances, and are ensuring the highest regard for the safety of our employees and the community. We will continue to listen. And in doing so, I wanted to briefly bring some clarity to items we heard at the township meeting on Monday evening. Range has provided Cecil Township with an enhanced sound mitigation plan, which I will provide again to the township tonight. Range has executed on this sound mitigation plan, and Range has offered to meet with the township supervisors about that sound mitigation plan and our operations. The township supervisors have not yet taken Range up on that offer, but that is a standing invitation, and I welcome it. I'm also extending a standing invitation for township officials, excuse me, to join us for a site visit of these operations, so you can see that noise mitigation firsthand. As it relates to the ordinance before us tonight, and I'll speed it up here, to provide some general context, Range currently operates 305 well pads in Pennsylvania. Three of those well pads are in Cecil Township. But Cecil Township nonetheless represents a high priority township for Range. Not only because it is home to our regional headquarters and many of our employees, but also because we are currently developing two pads in the township, the Schultz and Augustine pads. While the proposed ordinance will not impact current pads or approvals, they are nonetheless a misguided policy proposal and adverse to the very natural gas industry, which has brought so many jobs, headquarters, residents, taxes, and more to Cecil Township. Range has provided comprehensive comments on the proposed ordinances to the Planning Commission, and I will provide another copy of those this evening. In closing, here's a summary of our concerns, quickly. The creation of that overlay district that limits new oil and gas development to only a few areas, essentially banning future oil and gas development in the township. The establish of noise restrictions, which would be nearly impossible for not only the natural gas industry to meet, but also any industry in the township and business. And then the imposition of numerous conditions and requirements that are either inconsistent with state law or preempted by it. These draft amendments are not just an effort to update a longstanding ordinance. They would deter and prevent the development of any future pads in the township. Most importantly, they could significantly impair the property rights of thousands of landowners in the township, many of whom look like they're here tonight. I'll leave you with this. Range is committed to responding to the community's needs today while taking a long-term view of operating responsibly in the township. Thank you for, for your time.
Thank you, Laurel.
Thank you, Chairman.
Ms. Sheridan is going to be up next. If the following people could follow her. Mike Monaco, Mark Caskey, Suzanne Murrah, Dana DeSefi, Lee Petoya, Mindy Roman, James Feeney, I believe is his name. John, is it Moki?
Stop it.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, and then Jan Nagy.
Tom, can I say one thing?
Go ahead.
As far as Laurel saying that us as a board should take up, take Range's request that, or invitation for the board members to visit the well pad, in other words, we should meet with Range? I want to go up on the well pad.
We will discuss all the comments throughout this month.
Okay.
Kara Sheridan, 58, North DePauli Road. I live approximately 1,000 feet, yep, 58, North DePauli Road. Sorry, I'm restarting my timer right now, hold on. Just want to make sure I get my three minutes. Okay. I live approximately 1,000 feet from the edge or 1,200 feet from the wellhead at the Augustine pad. I have been dealing with what many refer to as a temporary inconvenience for over eight years. By the end of August this year, we will have dealt with over three years of active construction, drilling, fracking on the site, including two rounds. Range Resources has informed us they plan to come back for another round in one to two years. Could there be more, round three, four, or more? I have this timeline of events that I'd like to enter into the record so everyone could take a look at it. During the most recent round of drilling, my family has experienced a number of ill effects of activities on the well pad, including general annoyance and irritability, trouble concentrating, difficulty falling asleep, and chronic headaches. My 11-year-old daughter fell asleep at 6:00 PM on the couch yesterday because she couldn't sleep the night before because of the noise. As was mentioned earlier, the 1,000-foot setback was established based on leaving areas that could be drilled. Shouldn't this distance instead be established based on what will protect the residents' health, safety, and well-being, which is responsibility of the Board of Supervisors? So what am I asking for? Number one, allow this activity to occur only in the zoning district it should, industrial, or at a minimum, implement a 2,500-foot setback requirement. Number two, assure that this is in fact a temporary inconvenience for residents. Why 2,500 feet? 1,000-foot setback is not adequate. There is a risk, I live 1,000 feet from the existing well pad, and it is troubling every single day. Someone will have to go through the same thing with me. There are three other references I have, which would help you to establish a more appropriate setback. The Washington County Hazard Mitigation Plan, I have the link, and I will ask that you put that into the record as well, has been developed in an effort to protect life, safety, and property by reducing the potential for future damages, economic losses as a result of hazards, including unconventional drilling. Page 189 states that vulnerability to oil and gas wells is defined as being located within 1,000 yards or 3,000 feet of unconventional gas wells. This buffer is what the DEP uses as its zone of culpability. While explosions or other catastrophic incidents that could cause property damage are under consideration, the primary concern is people living close to wells. Second, the 43rd statewide grand jury report states that we should be increasing the setback from 500 feet to 2,500 feet, and I'll provide a reference to that as well. We have two adjacent townships, Peters Township, who only allows for drilling, Peters Township and South Fayette Townships, who only allow for drilling in industrial zones. And if we have a concern that they're going to say we zoned them out, that's incorrect because there are already seven approved wells in this township, and in addition, the laterals can go four miles, so they already have the ability to cover this district. As the temporary inconvenience, I will speak to next time as time has wound out for this one, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carol.
My name is Mike Monaco, 1440 Rising Road, McDonald, 15057. One of the questions I wanted to direct to Dan was the overlay change from a 500 to 1,000 feet.
Can everybody hear him? Put it close, Mike, please.
My question is, since you have some software that can do this, what was the change in quantity of acreage from the 500 to 1,000 foot, if you have that, if you can get that?
We can get it. I thought about that question today, but I didn't get it analyzed. We can get that question.
And the underlying issue with going forward at the new setback, everybody, my first question is, would any of the existing wells have been allowed to exist? Another question, you don't have to answer it now.
Sure.
Okay. So, which leads up to underlying issues with the gas industry, is Marcellus shale is only one layer or three or four layers. So going forward, are you basically barring any other activity on anything that doesn't meet this? Because my understanding is only the current permits are grandfathered. So therefore, I challenge the comment that this is only for these wells in this location. Because at the look of this map, I think this is predatory, defeating the gas industry with this ordinance that I think, truthfully, isn't substantiated by any violations, by sign studies that I think you guys have performed. So I'm kind of confused where we're at this crossroad, that there's all this damage being done based on this ordinance, selected issues, and I've had them because I live on Rising Road, and I know about the truck traffic. And no offense, Dawn's not here, but I addressed the noise and the jake brakes directly with Range, and I actually, I thought the state had put up the signs, but actually Range did. They took care of the issue. So they, in my eyes, they have performed. But getting back to this ordinance, I believe, because of this change right here, and then on top of that, the sound ordinance is also a limitation. So you're almost to an event that's going to jeopardize any kind of gas drilling in the township, which I believe is against the law. I think it's arbitrary and subjective and not supported by what they've been able to accomplish, not only Range, but anybody else that comes in. And I think the other townships that allow drilling understand that. And I think they should be used as examples to support what Range is doing. Now, to get off the subject, I have a question about how you addressed this ordinance. My understanding is, well, I thought my understanding was, that the Planning Commission would be directing how and what gets put into this ordinance. It doesn't sound like that occurred. I believe this ordinance was put together through input that I don't think came from all the landowners, especially not the ones that were supporting this industry. And I'd like to know how that occurred because how come I didn't get asked? How about anybody that could have affected some of the questions that are on this ordinance that might not even be required to be there? So again, I'm going to ask that question and expect an answer. How do I get to affect those questions and those ordinance requirements? Because I believe they have been arbitrary.
All right, Mike, you are doing it right now.
No. No.
We're listening to your comments.
But let me answer that question.
Wait, we won't take it into consideration.
But let me address that. You're addressing questions that are detrimental to the industry because somebody put them there. How about if I elected not to have them there, we wouldn't have this conversation? So I disagree because you've preempted my argument.
Now, you can bring up new items that you think should be in the ordinance, but again, your time is up. We've got to let everybody get a chance. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
My name is Lee Patouille. I'll spell that for you. My wife and I live at 209 Liberty Boulevard, Cannonsburg, PA, 15317. Dan, let me ask you a question. I saw an initial map about where fracking would be allowed. We live at inside Traditions of America, South Point. Is there still plans or a proposal to have fracking right next to that area? It's off of Han Road and McMurray. Is that still part of your plan?
Dan, would you bring up that overlay map first?
The map is up.
Okay.
Traditions of America is located over in the Peters Township area. This is actually Traditions of America here. So there would be potential land located, where's my new arrow?
Right in this new area.
There would be land to the north, to the north and to the west, and here in this area that would be in the proximity to Traditions of America. I don't know what that distance is, though.
Okay, thank you.
It's at least 1,000 feet.
Okay. Well, thanks for that clarification. My wife and I originally looked at coming back to Cecil Township because we have grandchildren and a son and a daughter-in-law close by when we retired. And we bought in one community. Then we found out there was going to be fracking next door. A lot of the neighbors got concerned. We engaged legal counsel. $25,000 later, we terminated the contract. We then went to Traditions of America, looking around, doing research, and finding out there would be no fracking in the area. And we love that area, 55 and above community, high-priced homes, a lot of taxes that help support this great school district. And the concern is really, we are 55 and above residents. We're looking for peace and calm and joy in our retirement years. When you think about some of the implications of fracking, it concerns us, our health, our grandchildren, and those kinds of things, also property values. Many of us have spent the most amount of money ever on our homes, and we're planning to live there for a long time, at least on this earth, our last home on this earth. But the idea that we're going to be dealing with these issues in our senior citizen years and spending more money on housing issues that we have to relocate and also on medical expenses is just appalling. So we ask you to take a hard look at that for those high-paying tax people. Thank you.
Chairman, I've been asked if I could put the township seal back up, the crest that we have.
Yeah, we don't need it right now. Go ahead.
I was asked by one of the speakers.
Are you a township resident? Are you a township resident?
I'm ready.
I said, are you a township resident?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mark Caskey, 100 South Point Square Lane, Cannonsburg, 15317. I was asking for the C-A-S-K-E-Y. So I'm the president and the founder of Steel Nation. Steel Nation is up behind Vincent's. We're an oil and gas service firm. We design and we build gas processing plants. We build compressor stations, metering runs all over the United States. We've been here five years now. Love Cecil Township. I look around the room, we've got four employees that live in Cecil. We have a room full of people. We had another person inadvertently parked next door, they had to move their car, I apologize. So I've been in the oil and gas industry since I founded this company in 2008. We have built 95% of the buildings involved with oil and gas in Washington County. I look around the room here, I see a lot of yellow shirts, I see a lot of oil and gas workers. I look at the people that we employ, you know, we've got 40 people up and behind Vincent's that work out of there. We've got another 100-some contractors that work at any given time, maybe 150 when we're really busy. These are not low-paying jobs. These are, a lot of times, six-figure jobs. You know, we pay a lot of taxes to this township, to Cannon McMillan, where my kids go to school. The economics of oil and gas has been a godsend to this township, to the township of surrounding this area. What would we do if we made it so hard to drill that there's no industry left anymore? There's very few industrial zones in Cecil. There's very few industrial zones in South Fayette, Peters Township, North Sturban. Where would these buildings go? Where would these high-tech companies go? It's a very important, I spent the last two days looking at the, not the Schultz, yeah, the Schultz well and the Augustine well. I see where the Augustine well is very close to Windsor, you know, driving through Windsor, getting up to the top, you know, sound is an issue. But as I look through the Thornton sound studies, if I look through the Barron sound studies, everything is in compliance right now. We talk about DB, DBA versus DBC. Cecil would perhaps be the first township in the state of Pennsylvania to go to DBC. DBC is very complicated, it's just not the measurement of vibration and deep frequencies. I think Range, when I look at the sound walls that are around Augustine, which is a lot bigger and more sound, more in a denser area with Windsor being there, I look at those sound walls, and those are perhaps the nicest sound walls I've ever seen in the history of my three years here. Range is doing everything that's possible. I've been following this for years and years now, since I started Steel Nation. We do not do drilling or any sound wall fences in that, but we certainly are sound wall experts and are called to testify many, many times. But again, I just want to thank the board for letting me speak. My final thing is, I wanted to see the logo. If you look at the logo, there's three different things in there. There's farming, there's oil and gas well, and there's a coal, a shovel and a pick. This township was founded on coal, on farming, and oil and gas. We need to keep oil and gas here. Thank you very much.
Wait, Mr. Caskey, Mr. Caskey, Mr. Caskey. As a point of clarification, do you reside at 100 South Point Square Boulevard?
My business, Steel Nation, is there.
Right, but that's not your residence.
I live in North Sturban.
Right, thank you, if that's all I want to...
No, our business is there. It says right here, I'll read it, "Public comment will be limited to township residents and township taxpayers."
I'm not arguing.
We pay a lot of tax money to have our business here. We don't pay taxes in Cecil, Ms. Fisher?
I didn't say that.
We don't pay taxes in Cecil?
I didn't say that.
School taxes, Washington County taxes, Cecil Township taxes? We pay no taxes to Washington County and Cecil?
The law, listen, will you stop a second? The law says residents and taxpayers.
Could you read number four?
I just told him that.
That's spelled F, as in Frank, E-E-N-E-Y. Resident, I'm sorry.
I said, you have the floor. I'm trying to get everybody to listen to you.
Okay. I am a resident at 602 President's Drive in Cannonsburg, and I'm also a Traditions neighbor who spoke just one person previous, and I have some of the same concerns that that gentleman had. I will not repeat them in the interest of time, but having this map here, which looks almost star-shaped in terms of, it's a very strange outline coming close to our development, but being, it seems to make no sense. And I've seen various maps. Will these maps be available on your website, the different maps and explanation? Because, you know, as you explain, they show shrinking potentials for development. Will these be on your website and explain what each one represents?
I don't know how good the explanation will be, Dan, but they'll be on there. There's a legend and a key there that's, I think that's...
Okay, because there was some map shown that had considerably less development area than this one does right here. So...
Each change in the distance from a protected structure, the greater the distance from a protected structure, the less area there would be for oil and gas activity.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so that's really, this is the 1,000-foot representation of what's in the ordinance now.
Okay. Is the ordinance still considering different offsets?
No, it's currently at 1,000 feet, correct?
Is it one considering, okay.
Depending ordinance, yeah. The current version is 1,000 feet.
Okay. Then my specific question will be, is within the ordinance, will there be planned ongoing environmental measurements, air quality, water quality, noise levels at all? And if not, why not?
We don't do water quality.
To make sure that the contractors are maintaining your specifications?
That, that is a DEP prerogative. That's what they have to do. We're allowed to do everything else but pollution and noise and, um, ground, ground contact.
Explain it. We can regulate where oil and gas goes, but we're limited on regulating how they do it or things like air quality. So that's why setbacks are...
Talking about pollution things and...
Yeah.
So monitoring would be based on our complaints to the EPA? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, I mean, we can actually monitor it ourselves, but then we can turn them into the, the DEP. But we can't, we can't regulate it.
We can't force them to do it?
No, no, I understand. But it'll be per the details in, in the, in the requirements. You know, the noise levels, the, you know, any air and water, water quality. But just, that should be in consideration. And then I would like, as a homeowner, to have MSDS chemical data sheets available for all the chemicals being used. I hope that will be available in part of the ordinance.
(applause)
Again.
Can we just go in that further?
Yes, again, the MSDS are available on site. It is hard to see on the map there where the protective structures are. On a map that we're going to have on the website, if, if they zoom in, are we going to actually be able to show the protected structures? That, he said it's an odd shape and it's because there's a, there's a protected structure within that semicircle there.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could represent the structures on a map at this scale. They would probably look like specs. It'd be hard to see. So we could break the map into pieces and make it bigger scale. I mean, you, sure, you can do, you can do anything you want to do to show it. It just to represent, I was just trying to represent the whole township with this map.
Right, that's what we asked for, I know. But eventually, they would like to see that, you know, why those shapes are like that, where the protective structures are.
Sure, yeah, we, there's a, there's a, there's a coverage that shows all the structures, which is like a layer on the map. It's not turned on on this one because you couldn't see it, but we can, we can make a map to that effect.
All right, Gretchen?
Just, yeah, to further elaborate on the gentleman's question, we are requiring a variety of studies in this ordinance. The township has the ability to protect its environment. I mean, it has that right. And we've added in here the things we believe are appropriate to do that. The local government isn't the one that can, you know, issue citations if there is an air quality issue. They don't have that power, but we can certainly request and require studies. We can do monitoring, you know, ourselves. And we can require other things to try to protect the environment. But you do get into an area at some point where they're not the enforcer of certain areas that might be enforced by other entities, if that's helpful.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Ashley Giardina, A-S-H-L-E-Y, last name is G-I-A-R-D-I-N-A. I live at 214 Francis Lane, McDonald, PA 15057, in the McConnell Trails Plan. So as a resident of Cecil Township, we understand the monies from the oil and gas drilling are influential to the community. However, we are deeply concerned about the drilling being done so close to our housing communities. These housing communities have hundreds of homes in them with hundreds of children living in those communities. As residents, we have major concerns regarding the health and safety of the drilling pads so close to our homes and the effects that will have on our little children. To support our concerns, I would like to cite two recent studies. The Pennsylvania Department of Health Borough of Epidemiology Hydraulic Fracturing Epidemiology Research Studies Childhood Cancer Case Control Study, prepared by the University of Pittsburgh, most recent as of August 3, 2023, found that southwestern Pennsylvania children who live within one mile of one or more fracking wells were five to seven times more likely to develop lymphoma compared to children who don't live near fracking wells. And that children living closest to the highest density of the wells had the highest risk. A second study, the final report from the Pennsylvania Department of Health Borough of Epidemiology Hydraulic Fracturing Epidemiology Research Studies Asthma Outcomes, prepared also by the University of Pittsburgh, most recent as of July 31, 2023, cited that people with asthma living within ten miles of fracking wells were four to five times more likely to experience a severe asthma attack during the production of those wells. During the production phase, natural gas and oil flow from deep underground to the surface and are collected. Production happens after well pad preparation, drilling, and hydraulic fracturing, and it is the longest-lasting phase in the process. This is all cited from the study. Severe asthma attacks among southwestern Pennsylvanians living near fracking wells is most frequently impacted kids between five and thirteen years old. These studies speak for themselves. It is apparent that these drilling pads need to be reserved to the industrial zones. We kindly ask this consideration for our children, our families. There's many families in Cecil who you've heard from, who are already dealing with the noise, that they can't live comfortably in their homes. They worry about the health and safety of their children and have to contend with subpar living conditions due to the drilling pads being so close to their homes. Please, let's not subject more Cecil residents in this community to this. Our community is much more than this. Please protect the integrity and safety of our community. The Cecil, the residents of Cecil do want, do not want the burden of the hazards of these gas wells. That is what we would like to ask as a community. And I live in McConnell Trails for full transparency, and that is one of the places on the map. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Suzanne Muora, M-U-R-A. I live at 1891 Rising Road. I'm a little nervous about coming up here in the first place, and I'll have to say that the yellow shirts have like, kind of intimidated me a little bit. Well, you're welcome. Okay, I'm here to talk about noise. I live on Rising Road. Okay, I'm not that close to the well, but the truck traffic is on my road. So I'm going to read a little article, paragraph from, it's about inflammation, lack of sleep and inflammation. Inflammation, when it comes to reducing inflammation, quality sleep isn't just beneficial, it's non-negotiable. Sleep deprivation is strongly associated with markers of inflammation, which helps explain why people who sleep poorly are at higher risk for cardiovascular disease, high blood pressure, diabetes, and other chronic health conditions. You can pick up any kind of publications about inflammation and how, how it's, lack of sleep can influence it. Now, I have an autoimmune-related disorder. It's called PMR, polymyalgia rheumatica. You can Google it if you like and read about it. It's a rheumatic inflammatory disease. And what does, what fuels inflammation is lack of sleep. And, and how would you know how much inflammation you have is by these inflammation markers, inflammatory markers? They're blood tests, okay? I have these blood tests done monthly. Now, when this truck traffic started in February, it went right past, it goes right under my bedroom window. There were many nights when we didn't, I didn't sleep all night. And I didn't feel good when I get up in the morning. January and February, my inflammatory markers were slightly high. The normal limit is five. Mine were around seven. When I had my tests done in March, the level was up to 10.1. I, I had my markers done on Monday this week, and now it's 18. So, it, it, science, science can prove what I'm saying, that lack of sleep is, it's not healthy. So, I guess what I'm asking is to be considerate of how many people and where are they being subjected to this noise? This truck traffic, no matter where you put these well pads, there's roads with people living there. And every night, you know, I called in the beginning, I called the Range Response Center and was told, because I asked about a curfew. Well, there is no curfew for the fracking. So, there was, you know, I'm stuck with it. So, the answer for me, I had to increase my medicine. And you might say, well, they're done now, the truck traffic's gone. This is going to affect me for months now because I've had to increase my dose of medicine, and it takes months to get the dose lower till I can be pain-free again. So, thanks for your time.
Will you pull that microphone up close to yourself?
Yeah, this, the one saying to F off to the other one up here, can we settle that? Right here. Yeah, I heard it was in line. She was telling her to F off.
All right, all right. Yeah, we would, please ask everybody to be civil, please. Go ahead.
Hi, Jason Smith, S-M-I-T-H. I'm a resident at 166 McConnell Road. I just wanted to ask, how many yellow shirts here actually Cecil residents? Show your hands. You're all Cecil residents? Okay. Who, who paid for the shirts? Because that's who's making the money here. He didn't buy her own shirts. I bought my shirt. Just want to clarify. I don't see how this benefits any residents other than pocketbooks of those who claim to be residents who work for the company. What?
Hey, please be quiet so he can hear. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, yeah. Would you please keep directing it to us? And please let him speak.
He can start his time again.
Go ahead.
Is the gentleman done? That I can speak?
No, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. If, if Range needs all these mitigation processes, walls, why is this a good idea for us? I, I don't understand how the board of Cecil can sit there and say, hey, this is great for our homeowners, this is great for our community. It's not. And the only ones making money are in yellow shirts. And that's all I have. Thanks.
My name's Janice Blannock. I live at 16 Jupiter Drive, Cecil 15321. So, my recommendations for changes to Cecil's dangerous and archaic oil and gas ordinance is that there should be no more additional well pads and drilling. That's it. I'm not naive to think that the well pads that presently exist in Cecil Township will ever go away. Shame on me and for all of us for letting it get to where it is now. But rest assured, a sleeping giant has been awakened here in Cecil. We are not going to sit idly by and allow further harm to come to our community. We are here tonight to make our voices heard loud and clear. A lot of people here tonight are activists, accidental activists. They would not have chosen this for, in a million years. Some of them are families living among industry and their lives are consumed by it. I've seen some of their homes and witnessed firsthand the noise, the truck traffic, the fumes. I've seen what it looks like to see flaring five hundred feet away from one's family room. Five hundred feet? You gotta be kidding me. Imagine living with that fear and anxiety on a daily basis, getting no help from anyone. Those who benefit from industry are telling you, it's temporary, get over it. We're having Range Resources tell you that they're in compliance. There are other activists here tonight because they've been fearful for years and want to make a difference. Imagine your child being a high school student at Canada McMillan and learning that yet another friend and classmate has been diagnosed with a rare and aggressive and most times fatal outcome. I applaud my friend Heaven and all those who do this work because they care and they want to make a difference. You should be doing the same. As for myself, I'm an activist now too, because one of the most precious gifts in life, one of my children, my son Luke, I lost him to a rare and aggressive bone cancer called Ewing sarcoma. And in my research, I've learned that radium 226 and 228 are a major concern because radium acts like calcium. It attaches to bone and is known to cause cancer and other illnesses. It's incomprehensible to me that people don't understand or won't admit that the, about the facts of the harmful effects of fracking. There have been hundreds of studies done and they all show supporting evidence. There's the Pitt study mentioned earlier, which found, among other serious concerns, that children living within one mile of an unconventional well were five to seven times more likely to develop lymphoma. I'm not done.
Janice, Janice, would you please?
Okay.
Apparently you're reading from something, and we'll take it into consideration.
I just want to finish this last statement. Last April, Physicians for Social Responsibility and Concerned Professionals of New York, a group of health professionals, scientists, medical organizations and scientists, found in their most recent compendium that they concluded that there is no evidence that fracking can be practiced in a manner that does not threaten human health directly. I'll repeat that if you want. Like I said earlier, we can't take away what's already there. But Cecil residents are going beyond, we're going to advocate for ourselves.
Janice, please submit that to us and we'll, we'll take it into consideration.
Okay.
Please give courtesy to the other residents too.
Consideration to others that went longer than me. I printed out some facts, which I'd like to submit to you, and I have copies for the rest of you. Five facts about the harm of fracking.
Thank you. Thank you, Janice.
Hi, I'm Tracy Batsholder. I'm sorry, I'm trying to compose myself. Janice, my heart goes out to my son Connor and his friend Hayden. They did cruising for Luke. I'm sorry. My name is Tracy Batsholder. I live at 4810 Overview Drive in the Overlook. One of the proposed would be right in my backyard. I do search and rescue. I'm a canine handler. And some of the areas that we train in is one of your well pads. And the smell affects my dog's scent. So, I hope none of your children or your father or your mother with dementia or anybody that you know goes missing. Because when that dog can't smell to find who's missing, that is time. That is time lost. I, okay, I was really not going to get mad. And when you talk about coal, the big three, what about Caterpillar? Where were you when Caterpillar shut down? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Tracy, please direct it to the board, though.
I'm sorry.
We're the ones that have to take the comments into consideration.
Okay, so, we cannot allow this to happen. The smell alone, it, it affects everybody. Headaches. You can't allow that to get into our drinking water for our children, for our families. It, it just, it can't happen. The noise alone, I, I feel for our residents. I've seen things shaking on walls in people's houses. How are we supposed to sleep? And if we move, who wants to move in and take our homes because we don't want to deal with it? It's going to lower our property values. Who wants to come in and live next to a well? I, I don't know what to do. But the fact that I've now seen what it does, my ability to go and, I, I said, how do I help somebody? How do I go and actually help my community? So I learned how to do search and rescue. I put myself through the year and a half to learn how to do that. I'm training my dog to be able to do that. And now my dog, because of the smell, he can't go find what he's supposed to find? That's insane. What are we doing? We're raping our land. And it's just absolutely disgusting. It's disgusting. That's it.
Jack, what's the issue?
Hello, my name is Sarah Martik. I live at, oh, thank you. My name is Sarah Martik. I live at 2003 White Oak Circle, Canonsburg, PA 15317. My apologies to the solicitor who heard this intro at the Planning Commission meeting, but I... but I very unexpectedly moved to Cecil Township in July of last year when my fiance and our dog, uh, with my fiance and our dog, when my fiance found a house with a quote unquote "perfect", oh, sure. Sorry, my bad. When my fiance found a house with a perfect backyard and he, he and I joke that we bought a backyard and a house came with it. So needless to say, we treasure our time outside. I'm here tonight to give comments as a resident, but also as a concerned advocate, as the executive director of the Center for Coalfield Justice. It's not right that too many of my neighbors are experiencing the very worst impacts of oil and gas activity within this township. Forget about enjoying the outdoors, residents are unable to find peace even within their homes because of the pollution, the pollution, the noise and the vibrations that no house can shelter them from. I want to raise the following points as exceptionally critical for this body to consider. First, I implore you to implement increased setback distances of 3,000 feet from well pads to protected structures like homes, schools and churches. 1,000 feet is simply not sufficient to protect our neighbors. And I would like to add that measuring from the wellhead as opposed to the well pad fails to account for the trucks and machinery putting off noise and pollution surrounding the well bore itself. Recent studies that were already mentioned saw significant increased health risks from living within one mile of wells. We have to make decisions that keep people safe and that make people want to live here with their families. Science-backed setback distances are one way to do that. The second point, I would like to encourage you to require operators to limit the noise they create by improving and expanding metrics for measuring sound impacts, setting standard operating times, respecting important days like holidays, some Sundays. And then also utilizing the best available machinery that produces the least amount of noise and installing sound walls. And third, I'd like to implore you to require third-party air monitoring that includes measures for VOCs and PM 2.5. The full list of recommendations I'd like to provide on behalf of CCJ have already been distributed in paper. But as a resident of Cecil Township, I want to stress the urgency of addressing these issues. It's not only the board's obligation under the PA Constitution, but it is also the right thing to do for all of our neighbors. I would suggest that no number of tours to Range well pads, undoubtedly that would be operating on their best behavior on those days, would be the best perspective for this board to consider. Instead, I would like to invite you to visit impacted residents' homes to get a firsthand account of the consequences of the decisions that are made here. When an operator can claim that they are following all state and local laws and yet still have such a harmful impact on people's lives, means that we must change our laws. Thank you.
Anyone else that's signed in to speak, if you could line up over here?
If you haven't signed in, please form a queue up there and you're welcome to come and give us your comments.
I'll have the sheet and you can sign in then.
But who's next?
Hi, my name is Lois Bauer Bjornson. I am not a resident, but I was hoping that I would be allowed three minutes to speak as Mark Kaski was.
At the end of the meeting, if we have time, we'll...
At the end of the meeting, then I'll be able to?
If we run out of time this meeting, we're going to have another one.
Okay.
Thank you. Someone can come up here, please.
Hi, my name's Chris DiGiulio. That's D I G U I L I O. I live at 438 Dogwood Lane in McDonald at the new Ryan Plan Homes. In the new Ryan Plan of Homes. I'm new to this. I've always lived in the city.
Could you please pull that microphone?
Yeah, sure. Is this better?
Everybody wants to hear you out there.
Okay.
I'm sure you want them to hear you also.
I'm not used to having a mic. So, I grew up in the city, so this is new to me, but I wanted to come tonight to gather information. A lot of people seem upset about this. I'm, I'm looking at your maps and I, I wonder to myself, how many of those spots there can actually support well pads and how many? I, I hear the argument that if you distance it too much, that you can't do any drilling here in Cecil Township at all, but clearly some is already going on. Of those sites that are up there, are there sites that will be less impactful to residents and neighborhoods as opposed to others? I mean, to allow for fairness that it is a resource that we need, but also, you know, obviously it has impacted a lot of folks. In my new plan of homes, there is a, a potential site as one of the other people in my neighborhood mentioned. And when my husband and I moved back here to Pennsylvania, we love the idea that it backs up onto the McConnell Trail and, and, and that's wonderful. The thing that concerns me is that I love going out in my backyard and I like sitting out there in the evening. And just the sound alone, it's such a peaceful place. People should be able to go out into their backyard and enjoy that, as everyone in this room should be able to do. Whether you work for the industry or not, no matter where you live, you should be able to do that. There are many places, I'm sure, across our country that they can drill for this. And I'm curious as to what percentage of the taxes that they pay actually support our township and what percentage that is. I would like to know that. They say they contribute to our taxes. Well, our whole plan of homes contributes a lot to this tax base, as well as all of the other homes. But there are a lot of new home plans here, so I would assume your tax base is getting broader by the minute. And that if they don't drill here in Cecil Township, is that the end of the oil and gas industry? I don't think so. And that nice gentleman that came up, I don't want people to lose their jobs. I understand that you say that this place was built on that. But what I say is, I think it's very doubtful that a large percentage of the oil and gas industry actually makes six-digit figures. So when you have someone come up here and tell you that the oil and gas industry is lucrative for those employees, I'm pretty sure that only a very small percentage of those people that work for that company make six figures. And that's disappointing that someone would come up here and say that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Terry Scott, Black Oak Lane, again, McConnell Trails. I'm just here about common sense. I grew up in, I grew up in Cecil. In the Flair Plan. Moved away. Actually live right across the street now. In McConnell Trails. And they just sold the last house in McConnell Trails. And again, common sense. They want to propose to put a oil and gas well right between the Flair Plan and McConnell Trails. That does not common sense.
Were you here at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes.
We did clarify, there's no proposed well anywhere.
Well, there's a proposed site that could go, however you want to word it.
It's an area that you have meeting...
Yes. However you want to word it. You can word it however you want to word it. So to welcome all these people from McConnell Trails that just bought their brand-new house on the McConnell Trail, we're going to put a proposed site right in their backyard. Common sense. Don't do it. As everybody that has spoken from the industry said, it's an industry, therefore it should go in an industrial zone. Common sense. Health, safety, welfare, quality of life. Everybody that's lived by a well in this township doesn't have any of those things. Common sense. Don't build anymore. The man that owns the business said it's the best sound wall he's ever seen. It doesn't work! The lady right next door says it doesn't work! Common sense! So that's all I'm saying. You do not put oil and gas wells in community neighborhoods, especially brand-new ones, who people have spent their life savings to move here to live on a trail to walk their dog and kids, who could potentially be walking by an oil and gas well. Common sense. Thank you.
Kevin, Kevin Hoffmann, H O F F M A N, 3005 Sir Charles Drive, McDonald, PA. Four years ago, I stood here at the ordinance workshop. I came looking for answers as to why the current ordinance had a 2,000-foot setback for schools, but only 500 feet for our homes. And you told me at the time, only one of the board members was around when that ordinance was put into place and you couldn't offer an answer. That excuse doesn't fly anymore. You're all here and part of this new ordinance. And the distance you have put forth is 1,000 feet for our homes, still half as much as the 2,000-foot setback for our schools. So a lot has changed in the last four years. I also read that Pitts study and my heart sank after reading it. The fact that a child within, within a mile of a well is five to seven times greater, has a five to seven times greater chance of developing lymphoma is something I read as I pulled up a Google map and dropped a pin on my house and then a pin on the Augustine well pad and saw that I was just over 1,500 feet from that site. I have a wife who's immunocompromised. I have a two-year-old son with autism who loves nothing more than to be outside in the fresh air. He doesn't speak a lot of words yet. He grabs your hand and leads you to the thing that he wants the most. When he puts my hand on the back door, I question every time if opening that door is the right decision for him. Breathing that air is safe. I urge you to increase the setbacks, to match the setbacks for our schools. Every board member here has the chance to make that decision. And if you still believe that the setbacks for our homes deserves to be less than that of our schools, then explain to us, explain to your residents, why children like my two-year-old son deserve less protection in and around their homes than they do when they're at school temporarily? Thank you for your time.
Kevin, Kevin, I do want to address that, I do want to address that question you had asked.
Yeah.
I was on the board whenever the first wells went in in Cecil Township, in, in the Engle well and the Troyer Farm well. At the time those wells went in, there were no issues with the wells, the neighbors, there was no complaints, there was no noise issues, there was the frac pond issue, the dead birds and things like that. Flash forward, flash forward today, they don't do frac, those ponds anymore. The last well that came in 2017 was the Augustine well, from, from those wells. During that time, we hardly had any complaints. I mean, there were, there were complaints, but it was nothing like it is now. And, and, and that's, that's the difference though, that whenever we set the 500 foot, that was a standard that the state had at the time. And it was a minimum standard, but it worked at the Engle well and it worked at the Troyer Farm well and it, it didn't really do, caused a lot of complaints at the first Augustine well. Now, I know things are different and that's what we're trying to address. But that's how that 500 foot came about a long, a long time ago.
Understood. I just want to say about the setbacks, when the setbacks, if you increase them, I understand that closes up those shaded pockets where fracking could occur. That is not a ban. That's, that's, that's an indicator that everyone involved within that perimeter needs to agree to waive that setback if they believe a well should be put there. And if our health is all, if our health is all at stake, if we're all affected within 2,000 feet, up to a mile according to the University of Pittsburgh study, why should we not all have the idea that we can say, no, I'm not willing to take that risk?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Hi. Jennifer Nagy.
Please bring it close to you.
Close to me? Jennifer Nagy, 50 North DePauli. 50 North, Nagy, N A G Y. I live 600 feet from the Augustine well. You can just follow the space needle if you want to know where my house is.
Please keep trying to speak up because the people in the background...
I'm here to speak to the whole grandfathered-in thing because I'm here to advocate, obviously, for the rest of the township. No one should have to deal with what my family's dealing with and what our neighbors are dealing with. And I keep being, you know, this isn't going to change for you, it's not going to do anything for you. Well, every time I hear the word grandfathered, it reminds me of my freshman year of college when, which was a million years ago, mind you, and the Greek ordinance or whatever had just changed off campus about who could have a house. And one house in particular was grandfathered in and allowed to stay there. And halfway through my freshman year, that house burnt to the ground and someone lost their life. And I guarantee that that person's parents aren't at ease because it was grandfathered in and allowed to stay there. It was a stupid reason then and it's a stupid reason now. So, I'm advocating to change what's going on at my house and my neighbor's house.
Hi, my name is Nikki Pawlos. P A W L O S. I live at 54 Windcrash Drive in Cecil, which is up in the Flair Plan for any of those that are familiar. I just want to start by saying that I support blue collar workers. I am married to one. I am from a long line of blue collar workers, both men and women, so I'm proud of that. And I appreciate my lineage. And I appreciate everyone's hard work, whether it be at a desk or out in the field or anywhere in between. Now that being said, since we are not supposed to appeal to emotion, let's just look at the black and white of this. Let's look at people that have just moved to Cecil within the past few years. Okay? Because my husband and I can move if we want to. Our, our house is very close to paid off, so we're fine. We have a lot of equity. We're good to go. But let's put ourselves in the shoes, if we're not already there, of someone that's starting out a new family, someone that has a 30-year mortgage. The interest rates now, what does that look like for someone that wants to move? Number one, who's going to be able to sell their home, even for what it's worth, with having this smell, the constant 24/7 of this low-grade sound? That is quite honestly, you can look up many health reports, I wish I would have quoted even just one of them, but I think it's pretty much common knowledge, knowing that that is just not good for our bodies, not just our psyches, but everything else. You know, we, we need to remember that we're human beings. Most people here are hardworking people. And what does that look like? Does that mean that we're now stuck? So if we have more fracking pads? Or if we don't say, hey, let's do an operation Monday through Friday, nine to five, and then stop the madness so people can actually sleep and have their kids go out in their yards? You know, what, what does that look like? What's the black and white look like? What does that bottom line look like? Because a lot of the oil and gas industry likes to look at that quote-unquote "bottom line", what's my bottom line look like? Am I going to be a good person if I know that there's going to be a fracking pad that's going to be built behind my house and all of a sudden I put it up for sale? And then sure enough, that next person moving in has a 30-year mortgage and, and that's what they have to deal with? We are now putting people to a point where they're going to be stuck. And I have a feeling that there might already be people in this room that are probably already stuck. Because where are we going? You know, you'd, you'd have to significantly downsize at this point in the game with just the way that society is and with, you know, budgetary concerns, again, interest rates sky-high. What does that look like for everyone? So, if you're not making a dollar from the oil and gas industry, I would really love if I were allowed to address everyone. I'd love to say, give me a show of hands if you're not making $1 of who wants a pad in their backyard.
All right, we, thanks for comments.
So we have three people. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Melissa Moersky. I live at 10... Sorry.
I live at 10, sorry. I could talk to a room of 12-year-olds all day, adults, not so much. I'm Melissa Moreski, M-O-R-E-S-C-H-I, and I live at 1063 Wendy Anne's Drive, and that's So if Range and the current well pads are in compliance, which is what I continually hear from Range and the other pro-industry individuals, something needs to change. Based on what I have experienced over the last few months, I live 5,200 feet from the Bernard Schultz pad, and the continual disturbances my family and I have experienced have been detrimental to our quality of life. You do not want well pads 1,000 feet from protected structures. Is it the job of the board to protect the economics of the industry, or the health and safety of your residents? This is a rhetorical question. I don't need an answer. I just want you to think about it. The thought that the overlay map allows drilling 1,000 feet from protected structures is terrifying to me. I am assuming that areas are zoned industrial, commercial, and residential for a reason. Fracking should be kept to industrial areas. Period. I am asking that the board keep fracking to those areas listed as industrial. Please protect the residents and not the economics of the industry. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Leah Lipner, L-I-P-N-E-R, 411 Independence Way, Cannonsburg, Traditions of America. We have currently about 200 homes built and people are living in them, with approximately another 150 to come. And as I look at your map, it's, it's damn close to us. And this map has been going around our community like wildfire in the last two weeks. People that move there have no idea that this could, this would happen around an elderly community, and they are anxious and scared. I'm going to quote a Harvard study. They found that elderly Americans have a higher risk of dying prematurely if they live near or downwind of fracking sites. We would be downwind if, if they decided that they wanted to place one where it is. When they analyzed the Medicare data, they found that there is a 3.1% increased risk of dying prematurely for those living near or downwind of a well site. However, if they live upwind, that risk was 2.2% greater. I'm not a newbie to Washington County. My husband and I moved here from the city of Pittsburgh. I've had the asthma from the steel mills, and everybody says, oh, you're a newbie. My roots in this community go long. My ancestors lived here and worked in the coal mines. So I'm not really a newbie. I'm just reintroduced. And I'm asking, please do not let them put any pads above senior citizens' heads. We bought these homes, paid very high prices for them, and are paying a bundle of taxes, and, um, paying a bundle of taxes, and had no idea that this could possibly happen. My husband was talking to me today, maybe we should move. And I told him, our last move was our last move. So please take the senior citizens into consideration, because other than children, we have a very high death rate from the fracking industry. Thank you so much.
I have just some quick things. One is, I understand, I was happy to see you were taking comments that were to be emailed to a Cecil Township email box, but there appears to be no process for reading those comments and doing anything with them or replying to any questions. And you can reply to that later if you feel like it.
We'll fix that if that's the case.
Okay. The other thing is, I did compare the language in the current versus the proposed ordinance, and was surprised to see that for violations, there's only a $1,000 a day penalty, and I would like you to consider making that at least $10,000 a day. What's, what's $1,000 a day to Range Resources? And then lastly, I would like to know how much money Range Resources has donated to the township over the course of the last 15 years. I want, I'd like to see year by year. It's wonderful that, you know, we had a great fall festival, and I'm sure Range donated a whole bunch of money, and I heard people from out of town saying, this is great, no other township has these festivals where the kids can do the amusements for free. But, you know, are we really prostituting ourselves by taking that money from them?
Hi, Adele Gooch. I'm at 512 980 Road. I am about 2,500 feet from the Schultz well pad, and my in-laws are much closer. We have had two years of construction and activity, but the last six months have been the worst. They've been horrible with 24/7 industrial noise and disturbing low-frequency vibrations. To my knowledge, Range hasn't made any changes, as requested at the Schultz pad. I took a drive around and I looked, and on my property, I don't see any sound wall. On the side where the leaseholder lives, full sound wall. I think the sound is ricocheting off of the wall, straight to my property. I've had Range come out, I've received a call from a representative telling me that the noise is much louder than they anticipated because of the equipment being used. I asked if it was because they were using diesel instead of their clean fleet, and they told me yes. Range has completed four out of 14 wells there and plans to return. My family, including my kids, have endured lack of sleep and health concerns, but I'm going to move on and focus on the ordinance. New ordinances need to be enforced on existing pads for any new wells drilled. The grandfathering should not apply to the operational procedures in their conditional use agreement. Range needs to get permission for wells beyond what is approved, and also, they should need permission to refrack existing wells. I have concerns about the air ports I've seen from Schultz. Number nine on the proposed ordinance is air quality. I would like to at least ask that all pads monitor the air data through all stages, including production, using real-time data and EPA standards. For water, which I believe may fall under number eight, environmental impact, I would like to ask Range to monitor private water sources. I have a well that I'm concerned about, through all phases, including production. And the proposed noise ordinance, I believe, is a step in the right direction, but I would like to make sure that we follow all of the recommendations from the consultant that the township hired. And I'd also like to know if Range has a sound mitigation plan that they are now presenting, and there's ways to limit the noise, why isn't that something that was done automatically as a best practice to protect, to protect the residents? Well, thank you.
Thank you. So my name is Maureen Mueller. I live at 441. My name is Maureen Mueller. I live at 441 980 Road. I'm McDonald, 15057, and I'm sure I'll get made fun of on social media, because that often is part of the fallout of this fun. So my concern, I am a longtime resident, I have been with this from the beginning, like I had three thumper trucks put out their outriggers on 980 in front of my house when the township said, no, 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 you guys can't do that. Like, we're in it from the beginning. We've been putting up with crap. And I thought, you know, just when you think you have these rules to protect you with industrial zoning and not, lo and behold, then you see this map, and my heart, like, just sunk in my chest. I went out to take my dog out on St. Patrick's Day, and I see the trees on fire, and I'm thinking, like, holy crap, what's going on? So I call 911. Lo and behold, I'm like, well, I don't know where it is. I can't tell you where it is, but I like, there's, the trees are on fire. The dispatcher in the background asks somebody else, well, are they flaring? Like, I don't know, is literally the guy's answer. So they didn't even notify the 911 dispatch center, which, this keeps breaking out, by the way, so it's not just me. So is there some sort of notification we can get when this crap happens, so then I know to stay inside? I already have two sick kids. I'm trying really, really hard to get my kid to graduate as soon as possible, so I can get him out of here. He can't drink our water. He is, you know, like, I've just had it. I don't understand. I've also asked for, like, help with the DEP. I've gone and filed all of my reports. The DEP doesn't show up. They were supposed to do a site visit, and they're not there. I'm not going to go to the, you know, wolf in the hen house. I'm not going to call Range. They're just sweeping under a rug. Why would I go to them? Why? Like, that just doesn't make any sense. You should go to a third-party arbiter and figure it out that way. Why are we not doing air quality monitoring at different, like, elevation levels? I couldn't see that it was flaring, even though the fire department could see up on the hill, behind me in Timber Run. I couldn't see it, because I'm in my front yard. I'm at a different level of elevation. I have no idea what's going on. I can smell horrible smells, but I don't know what's going on. I don't know when I'm supposed to contact somebody. I don't know what I'm supposed to do. I just, it's, it's insane. When there's a still day, you can't tell where it is. And the other question you had about, like, the setbacks, why are we making them smaller when all of these gas wells are even getting larger? They are deeper, they are farther, they work like an octopus, they go down a mile and 1.3 miles, and then out 3.8 miles. Like, they, they are huge. They said they got, they don't need the compressor station on 980, because all three of these wells that are going in are putting out gas at such a high pressure, this is what I was told, by the township, that they don't need a compressor station. So these are not like your average garden variety little gas well. We have enough problems already on the downstream end of people's houses with the gas leaks and the recaptan and all this other crap. Like, it's enough. We have been fighting for this so long. Like, why are we making it worse? Why would we, why would we do this?
All right, you've, you've made your point.
Hello, my name's Amanda Harcha. I live at 111 Aerial Drive, Cannonsburg, 15317. 111 Aerial Drive, Cannonsburg, 15317. I just wanted to address, I hadn't heard anyone say it yet, but one of the potential sites is right next to Muse Elementary School. Muse Elementary School, right next to it. And that concerns me, as being a parent. There's a real risk to our children with these drill sites, and having it be so close to an elementary school is concerning. The risk is real of cancer, it's of asthma, but there's also other risks that they're investigating for pregnant women with premature births, low birth rates, neurodegenerative diseases, and autism. So there's a lot of research going on into how these affect children, and we're putting them right next to our schools, or potentially next to our schools. I think we really need to consider having further setbacks from schools, so that that doesn't happen, affect all the children.
Hi, I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I figured I would give my feedback as a resident. Sure, my name is Tim Ruff, and I live at 426 Dogwood Lane in McDonald Trails. And as I listened to everybody speak tonight, on both sides of the aisle, the thing that came to mind was at what cost for all of this? And a gentleman who has a business here said, this industry has brought so many jobs and taxes and families, and this area brought my family here, too. We moved here less than two years ago to grow our family. We even convinced my parents also to move here right down the street, so they're retiring here, too. So our entire family shifted from the Chicago area just to be here, because we liked it so much.
Check, check.
Okay. So it's fair to say that in our, in our home search, we wouldn't, we would not have considered moving here if there was a gas well anywhere near the neighborhood. And I'm sure that we're not the only family who would have. I, I work remotely, in a high-tech job, too, and we do have had the flexibility, we probably wouldn't have moved here. So just some considerations as you're making the decision, that whatever you do cannot easily be undone. It seems like with industry, you give them an inch, and they take a mile, and to get it back, you're spending a lot of money and a lot of time to get that back. So I'm all for energy independence, and, but it should be done with full consideration. And then, I wasn't aware that Range Resources sponsored the festival. It was huge, it was awesome. I just, I just keep thinking, if we don't make the right decisions, we won't have families and kids to actually be there at the festival. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
I have to bring this way down. Nadine, Nadine McKean, 230 Elm Drive, 230 Coleman Road, McDonald, 15057. I used to live at 320 Elm Drive here in Cecil, and we just, we moved about a year and a half ago. I have the dubious honor of being near the Augustine Well, and the new Connor Samuels Well will be just that way. My, my home and my son's home sit right in the middle. And everything that all these, most of these folks have said, I find to be true. We can hear the well on Augustine. At night, you walk outside to take your dog out. Hello? And you hear ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba. And I, I hear that, understand that's temporary, but it is annoying, and I can't even imagine what the people that are closer go through, because I have a distance. When I look out my, my family room window right now, I see in the night the Cecil Eiffel Tower and a flare, like, lights flaring when they are burning off. It's not what I expected when I bought 10 acres on Coleman Road to kind of live in the country. So I just ask that, when you are doing your consideration, if there's any way that you can grandfather the other wells in, it would certainly be appreciated by myself and my son and his small children and family. Thank you.
Luke McCann, 4005 Overview Drive. So I want to be honest. I'm neither pro or anti-fracking. It's thinking in absolutes is a fool's errand. Speak up. Yep. So let me start again. So I'm neither pro or anti-fracking. It's thinking in absolutes is a fool's errand, and there's a time and a place for most things. Fracking positively impacts many people's lives, and I definitely understand and respect that. However, I do have some thoughts regarding fracking in an area that is becoming increasingly residential, and will continue
Please slow down, so she can.
...on this path into the years to come. One, it's already been said, but I feel it's worth repeating. Why do we feel a school needs 2,000 feet of protection? Obviously, it's for the children. But why do we only choose to protect our kids at school when the other setbacks are currently 500 feet? The current proposal is still only half of that at 1,000 feet. In what world does this make any rational sense? I would ask that we, as a community, protect our children not only at school, but at all times, as they spend more of their time at home than they ever will at school, by reconsidering the residential protection zoning to match that of the protected school zone at a minimum. Two, why do we set these setbacks by our structure and not the property lines in which these structures reside? I don't know about you, but my kids are not housecats, and they're outside any chance they get. I would urge the Board of Supervisors to re-look at this map, and at a minimum, shifting the setback line from a protected structure to a property line in which the structure resides. And lastly, one thought to leave you with. I looked at all of the well pads currently built and noticed not a single one is close to the current 500 setback of the landowner's front door whose land it is. Is that because they do not Is that because they do not want to live by it, but yet have no problem pushing the burden onto their neighbors at the closest minimum distance allowed by law? Of course it is. Please increase the setback so that they can no longer push the consequences of their self-centered choices onto us as a community. The Board of Supervisors, please do not allow the selfish choices of a few to negatively affect the lives of the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. You know me, I'm a shorty.
AC Roland, 52 Sycamore Street, Muse, Pennsylvania, third-generation home and coal miner of Muse. I know there's been a lot of talk about the noise issue, but let's talk about our ground, our air, and our water issues. In 1921, the Cold Stream in Muse, AKA National Number Three, was 230 feet to 378 feet deep. Our water tables of fresh groundwater can be found at depths ranging from 200 feet to 1,000 feet. Did you know the EPA approved a permit for a toxic fracking waste site disposal well named Sedat 4A in Plum Borough, Pennsylvania? Did you know this fracking water has dissolved elements that contain hydrocarbons, heavy metals, salt concentrations up to seven times higher than seawater, and can contain radium-226 or 228, radioactive isotopes in addition to the chemicals added for fracking? As of today, there has been 353 chemicals identified being used in fracking waters, many of which can cause cancer and other serious issues, even in small doses. Seth, and I'm sorry if I messed up his name, Paleopico, P-E-L-E-P-K-O, Chief of Well Plugging and Subsurface Activities for the DEP Oil and Gas Management Program, said, "At least within Pennsylvania, this is the first time that we've seen that sort of spatial and temporal correlation with oil and gas operation activities and earthquakes here in Pennsylvania." They confirmed the state's first fracking-related earthquakes took place in Lawrence County, northwest of Pittsburgh, and more in Newcastle, Pennsylvania. These earthquakes were directly linked to nat- natural gas drilling, and earthquakes introduced by fluid injection was the largest, was a magnitude 5.8 earthquake in 2016 in Oklahoma. So what'll happen when we frac all these permitted wells that are in a four-mile radius of Muse? Muse looks like an ant colony under our homes and roads. So a surface spill can affect us all. Uh, concrete casings and case connector fails, and that can affect us. Uh, there was 140 cattle that were exposed to fracking wastewater, and 70, once a casting was breached, 70 cows died, and the remaining only produced 11 calves, and out of that, only three survived. Wildlife is also in danger. Fish die when fracking fluid contaminates streams and rivers. Birds are poisoned by chemicals in the wastewater ponds, and the intense industrial development uh, accompanying fracking, fracking pushes many animals out. The National Institute of Health says there are three clear dangers for the process of fracking. Sand in the fracking can get into the lungs, accidental chemical spills
Tom!
You!
Stop!
AC, AC, can you
She's already cussed me, and I, I'll reclaim my time because this lady is out of order.
Okay, she, alright.
She's out of order, Tom!
Alright, your, your time is up too, though, AC. AC, please be considered. There's other people waiting. They need a turn too.
We have one.
Go, go ahead, please. Have, have her come up, please. AC, please leave, AC, please keep your, your words to yourself.
Can I speak, please?
Please, please keep your words to yourself.
Lynette, please stop. You did, you've been calling her, I'm sitting here watching, you've been calling her names all night. Stop, both of you.
Go, go ahead, go, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name
Name and address.
My name's Kim Lucas. Um, I live at 233 North DePauli Road. Uh, there's a lot of, I'm not a good speaker, so you guys will have to just let me go here. I'm just, I'm not a good speaker. I don't normally do this, so.
Please get her close to the microphone, please.
I live on North DePauli. We have more traffic and more noise from Windsor Woods, from the building of all the homes, than we ever have from the Augustine Well. Oh, it just, it seems like it's always
Everybody was quiet while everybody else was speaking. Just give her time to speak. We're asking that you address our proposed ordinance. I mean, that's what this hearing is for.
So, we don't smell anything. We live 2,500 feet from the well. Uh, very little noise, very little noise, like, not much. Um, I'm trying to compare it to something. I don't know, it's not compared to the noise of the traffic that goes up and down the Pauli Road of all the cars and all, the noise from over there. It's, it's not, it's not even comparable. Um, I just wanted to say that, yeah, I'm a nervous person up there. It's
Yeah, please address, please
The, the train, the train has been more noisy. Um, the toll road has been more noisy. Everything's been more noisy than the Augustine Well that we live close to. They have been good neighbors to us, Range Resources. They do help out the township. They do do things for the township. Um, they try to take care of everybody and, and everybody's needs, and I just, I just don't understand the problem here. I just, I just don't understand. It's not, you, there's worse foods that, the children ingest than all this, than all the, the Range Resource gas problems. Like, it's, it's not a problem compared to everything we ingest in our bodies, and no one's concerned about anything else that's going on in the township with building and, um, everybody getting smushed into small quarters. It's, it's just, it's unbelievable.
My name's Dana DiSavie.
Please, please, give her, her, your attention, please.
Dana DiSavie, and I'm at 469 Dogwood Lane. I'm also in McConnell Trails. I've lived in Cecil my whole life. My parents still live here. They live in the Fleer Plan. They're the reason I came back to Cecil. I reinvested my whole life, less than a year ago, back into Cecil. It breaks my heart to see so many of my fellow community members suffering so many years, and their kids. I want to start a family here, and it makes me so scared to do that after hearing their stories. Seeing this map, it opens up the possibility that this would happen to me, this would happen to my parents and everybody else in my community. We can't let that happen. Every day, for the rest of my life, I'm gonna live in fear that Range could come into my backyard and ruin the rest of my life and the rest of my parents' lives. Please, as so many people had said before, we protect kids more in schools, reconsider the setbacks, reconsider it to just industrial. Something needs done so that we don't have more people up here suffering. I love Cecil. I love talking highly of, about Cecil, but we can't with this looming over us. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Amy Oskey, O-S-K-E-Y, 634 President's Drive. Um, I, I just moved here. Um, I live in Traditions of America. Um, so I grew up in Bethel Park. I got married to a fellow Bethel Park guy who joined the Army. Um, after 30 years in the Army, he retired, and we decided to come back to southwest, southwestern Pennsylvania to take care of our parents. Um, we chose Cecil Township. I knew that there was fracking in Washington County. I looked at where the pads were. I saw they were in the other side of Cecil. I thought, I'm good. Not so great for the people that are there, but I thought, okay, for where I'm moving to, you know, we'll be okay. And then I saw the map, and I about fell over. Um, you know, my husband was deployed multiple times to Iraq and Afghanistan and had to endure burn pits. And I don't know if you guys know what that is. You can look it up. It's, it's not good. And so I look at, like, literally, it would be behind our house, that there's potential to have a pad, and, and that's very disturbing, you know? I, I don't want that. My neighbors don't want that. And, uh, and truth be told, I, I wouldn't have bought the house if I had known. And so there are, you know, I don't know how many more houses are supposed to go in the Traditions of America Plan, but it's, it's all around there, and, and that should be a concern too. I don't know that, you know, if that'll turn people away from moving to Cecil. And as someone said before, I mean, and we, we've been saving for 30 years for our first house. We've been living in Army housing, and now we're finally in our first house. And, and I just wonder, should we be here? You know? And I don't want to have to move again. I, I've certainly moved it 15 times in 30 years. I don't want to, I don't want another move. So I, I don't know. I, I just hope you guys look at it and, and look at, um, what people are saying, because it's, it's rough. And, and I feel bad because we do need the industry, but I don't think we need it in our neighborhoods.
Hello? Uh, Merle Lesko, 383 Coleman Road. So, um, I've heard a lot of things tonight. Um, one of the last speakers here was, you know, 2,500 feet away. We don't hear anything. Um, can I see a show of hands of anybody that lives closer than 522 feet from an active large gas well?
I'm closer than you, just by a couple feet, but
Merle, Merle, please direct your comments to the board, please.
Okay, I'm sorry, but what I'm getting at is, is so, a lot of people have opinions, but I'm stating facts. I am 522 feet away from this monster that is controlling our life. The noise is unbearable. I've contacted so many people. I've really gotten a lot of response, but little results. And what I'm seeing here, from everybody here, this whole issue is tearing our community apart, and it's tearing separate families apart. That's how much this has gone to. And that's where we're at nowadays. But like I said, once again, I am first-line sufferer, and I'm telling you, this isn't opinion. This is fact. And I do have facts to prove everything that I'm saying to you. I have sound measurements. I have water doubts. I have an air monitor that tells me that I'm being polluted every day. So they've checked every box on me. They've got my water under question. The, the sound is no question, because that's being monitored by two monitors from them on my site. And I've also got, you know, this, this air pollution thing. So, like I said, a lot of people, not even from the township, a lot of people live way far away with their own opinions. Here's something of a fact. The guy that's closest to it is miserable. Thank you.
Michelle Stonemark, 40, North DePauli Road. I actually wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I was gonna let everybody else, but throughout the course of the evening, I just, I have to say a few things. Um, first, for the record, my husband and I and our three kids, um, are a little over 500 feet from the pad. I believe it's about 540 feet from the George Augustine well pad. Um, in addition to all the noise that we have complained about over and over and over again, we've experienced headaches, nosebleeds, earaches, where it feels like the pressure's building up, kind of like when you're on an airplane. It just builds up the pressure in your head. Um, nausea, vomiting, um, and there's other issues too that are, and just too personal for me to discuss here, but there's other issues going on as well. Now, on top of all of that, my house is literally vibrating. Many of you have, I've invited you up to see it. Um, you felt it. I can show you glasses of water shaking. I can show you paintings. I can show you tools falling down in my garage that fall off. There were, that were lined up. They fall over, clanging. I hear loud bangs in the middle of the night, thumping, grinding, you name it, I hear it. We're up most nights. Um, we have very seldom good night sleeps. We, there are also very limited areas in our own home. We've tried sleeping in the living room. We've tried moving to the basement. There are very different limited areas in our home that we can find any relief at all. And I emailed the board just this morning and said that I'm not sure how much longer we can stay there. And to that note, I take issue with the fact, um, I believe it was Ms. Zimba came up and said that Range was doing everything they could for us, and I take issue with that on several levels. One is that I have continually been complaining about the vibrations and the low-frequency noise. And they do come out, and they do monitor, and they do come out with the results. We're in compliance, but they're only measuring the DBAs. They're not measuring the DBCs. And I take issue with the fact that I've had an uprange employee tell me that, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I take issue with the fact that Ms. Zimba said that they're doing everything they can for us, when in fact, they should be. I was told by a Range employee that we are the closest, we are the closest residents to any well pad in Washington County. Now, whether or not that's the truth, I don't know, but that's exactly what he told me. So they should be doing everything they can, because no one else is closer than we are. I also take issue with the fact that, I, I don't remember who it was that came up, um, and spoke about how if we put the DBCs in the ordinance, that we'd be like the only township in the state to ever do that. Um, that's also incorrect. Uh, the Thornton Acoustics, the independent study that this board paid for, also had, um, recommended the municipality of Murrayville as a reference, and they include DBCs in theirs. So that's a reference.
That was only two minutes.
Yeah, I, there's no way that was three minutes.
I've been timing the whole time you're cutting.
Alright.
No, I'm not.
Word, Mr. Hunter, please.
Uh, this, I wouldn't be surprised. Uh, the, the independent study that you paid for with our tax dollars, Thornton Acoustics recommended to this board that they utilize the Murrayville, uh, municipality of Murrayville as a reference, and they include DBCs in their ordinance. And also, uh, as a final note, I, I, a quick question. I have one statement and then a question. My quick statement is, I just want everyone here to know that I looked up the impact fees. Um, they drilled Augustine in 2020 and 2021, and, and the impact fees that Cecil Township received were $370,000, and Peters Township that year received $471,000. They received over $100,000 more than us. And you know how many pads they have? Zero. 2022 Cecil Township, $468,000. Peters Township, 571.
Michelle, please direct that to the board and
Sorry.
Submit it to us, too.
Yes. Cecil Township, $468,000?
Her time is up.
I'm saying, yeah, give it to us.
571. My last question is, and I'm sorry, I promised it'll be it. Um, where, is there a state law that says they have to work 24 hours a day? Is there anywhere in the state legislature that says oil and gas has to operate 24/7?
We're, we're, we're working on that.
So there's no law? I just, I just want to, just want it in public record, that's all.
We're working through that with Range right now.
Let, let's answer that. There is an answer. We were given it today. Go ahead.
Yeah, answer.
Yeah.
Right. So, um, in terms of like a black and white law or regulation that says, you know, thou shall drill 24 hours a day, there is not one. What they are basing the ability to drill 24 hours a day on is a combination of the, the series of case law that says basically the township at the local level is unable to, um, regulate the how, only the where. So they're using that series of case law combined with their, with safety reasons. So that is the source of 24-hour
Except we regulate the, the how. They can't build houses at night, and they can't build plenty of things at night. So that doesn't really make sense. So, anyway, I take
Thank you, Michelle.
Except, thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle.
Hello, good evening, Board. Tim Walker, 1860 Rising Road, McDonald, PA. I'd like to welcome all the newcomers to the township. I personally have lived in the township my entire life and currently own property out on Rising Road, and I am actually a leaseholder who benefits from the wells. So I think, uh, Range has been a good neighbor, in my opinion, and they've complied with all the guidelines set forth by the state and by the township. Sure, there's probably some things that could have been done better. I agree that when they drilled the first wells at Augustine, there was very little interruption or side effects of that that affected the neighbors close by. So obviously, there's probably some things that should be done to correct that and find out what they did the first time. Uh, I can sympathize with the people who don't want a well in their backyard, but that's probably the case for everyone, everywhere. Nobody, we need it, we want it, but not in my backyard. So, the overlay map has been available for several years, the old overlay map. The developer that sold you folks these expensive homes on a postage stamp-sized lot The developer that sold you folks these expensive homes on a postage stamp-sized lot probably may even possibly own the mineral rights to the property that you bought. I can't say for sure if that's the case. But they should have disclosed to you where these overlay areas were, because they were worse before, or they're currently broader than what they are currently now. So I can't understand why, if everybody did their homework and the developer was upfront selling these $300,000 and $400,000 homes, again, on a postage stamp-sized lot, that everybody has ChemLawn come and spray every week, why they didn't disclose this information? So you've got Silver Creek's going to be going in, correct? Have, is the developer going to provide this information to the residents or the people potentially purchasing these homes?
So, no.
You know what I mean? I mean-
Tim, okay, but we're looking for comments on the new ordinance we're proposing.
Well, I think, I think 1,000 feet. I mean, there's no area that they'll be able to drill in township, really. I personally, for the landowners and the mineral right owners, they also are represented by you folks and should be represented fairly.
Thank you, Tim.
I'm not well-prepared, but I will be better prepared for the next meeting.
Hi, Caitlin Hoagel, 102 Sundial Drive. So I wasn't planning on speaking. I emailed my comments and questions ahead of time. I was really just planning on listening. And I share a lot of the concerns. I live in a residential plan. It's not a new build, but concerns for my young kids. We looked really closely and carefully at the environmental concerns prior to coming here five years ago, and still have fears every day that, did we make the wrong choice by coming to Cecil? And I think what prompted me to come up was that I was listening to so many folks in the room who are living in residential areas and negatively impacted by the current drilling and the potential for a future. And as I was preparing to come tonight and reaching out to other neighbors and friends and family members, I thought that you all should know that the response that I got from many were, do you think it will really matter? Do you think that they're actually listening? And I hope, as I have tonight, that you are listening, because I know that there are voices who are in favor. I have loved ones whose salaries and livelihood are provided by the industry, so I value and respect it. But what I hear is a community who is fearful for the health and safety of the children and elderly and everyone who lives here. And I hope that you hear that too, and I hope that you consider setbacks that are greater and, you know, just some other things that we can do to put the safety, the health and safety of our community first and foremost. The one thing I noticed when I read, I think it was South Fayette's ordinance, was in the opening, like, section, it was the health and safety of the community first. So I would just hope that you heard what I've heard tonight. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adam Bittner, 264 Francis Lane, McDonald. I think the gentleman that spoke to before me clarified what's really going on here pretty well. He referred to those of us in the McConnell Trails and other residential areas as postage-sized lots. What he's saying is that he thinks his lot matters more because it's bigger. So I have a question for the board. Do you guys want to be a suburb where people want to live? Or do you want to be an excerpt like you've always been? Do you want this place to have any political power for the rest of the region? Or do you want it just continue to be a backwater? If you want to be a backwater, don't do anything about this. Thank you.
I want to be a backwater.
Anybody else? What I was going to list, see if any of the board members wanted to make some comments first, based on what they heard. So Cindy, you want to start?
Based on what we, well, okay. So I have a couple of things to say. So first of all, oh, do you want to- Yeah, I was going to address that. Okay. So first of all, the representative from Range Resources stepped to the microphone and repeatedly said Range is listening and invited us, and in her defense, they did. They invited us today to the pad. I don't need to go to the pad. I know myself and several of the board members here have not gone to the pad, but have gone to the homes of the people who have been impacted. We've stood in their kitchens, we've stood on their decks, we've stood in their driveways, we've listened to their children, we've listened to them. This isn't about Range is listening. We want Range to do something. And since you're in the room with us now, we're asking you to do something. We don't want you to listen. Not up for election. I will go to the pad. I will have that conversation. I'm happy to do that. I've always been willing to have those conversations. But I will tell you, I agree that 500 feet, and I've always felt this way, is too close to people's homes. It is. I've heard you. But I've not only heard you tonight, I've heard you 11 years of sitting on this board as we've dealt one at a time with residents who've come. I stood in Ms. Stonemark's kitchen the other night as a flare literally lit her entire kitchen up. It's terrible. It's terrible to experience.
What can the board members say?
They'll get the opportunity to speak. They'll get the opportunity to speak. There were questions submitted tonight, and I'm going to ask the chairman to please address them. They were written in writing. Do you have them to be addressed, or no? I have some of them. Do you want me to just read them? Okay, last one. I will tell you this, don't assume that it won't end up next to you. If you would have told me that they would have put Connor Samuel and Augustine 900 feet from each other, I would have told you, you are absolutely crazy. A very small part of this community is being impacted by these wells, and don't assume that it won't happen to you. So talk to your neighbors if you don't want it. I am not opposed to the industry. I am not. I voted in favor of Bernard Schultz, which is the pad closest to my home. Why? Because, like a lot of you, I believed what they were telling me. I believed that they cared. I spent the past four days reading every single transcript from every single hearing. And you know what? They told us. They told this board what they were going to do. We just had stars in our eyes and didn't believe them, and we won't, we should not make that same mistake twice. One more thing, and then I'll, one more thing. And for the gentleman who stood up here and said that the leaseholder doesn't put the pad closest to their home, just a little bit of information for you, because I asked for this map. I was curious. I'd been told that repeatedly, too. So the Augustine pad sits 1,596 feet from the Augustine home. It sits 531 feet from the Stonemark home, and it sits 539 feet from the Lesko home. It's true what they tell you. And they'll tell you it's topography, but you're going to tell me that every single pad belongs on the far side of the property? It's not true. I asked Gretchen and Tom, which is included in our ordinance, that there should be no pad closer to the adjacent property owner than it is to the own leasers' home. And that's important to me. Sorry, bear with me. I'll let anybody else speak, and then I'll pull up questions.
Okay. Darlene? Yeah, you have any comments? What you heard so far?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. I've lived here in Cecil Township my whole entire life. My parents also. I have endured a lot of eminent domain, 79 coming through our farm, cutting us in half, driving three and a half miles around the farm, the other half of the property. My dad begged them, please, don't close that road. He passed on. He's gone. South Point Boulevard comes back through again and takes it again. I've endured a lot. Feel sorry for these people that are enduring it. You can't stop progress. I'm also close to a well pad, Inglewell pad. It was drilled back in 2000, I guess around '08, '09. It's still a producing well. That's what Cecil Township gets their impact fees from right now, the Inglewell pad, the Troywell pad, the Donna Road, also for me. I lived with the impoundment, never had a problem. Like I says, I feel for some of these people that are constantly complaining. Maybe they have a right to, but us farmers and our farmers that were lifetime residents, that now there's only few, there's only a few farms left. And I do have to sympathize with these people that bought these homes and did not do their research as far as their real estate agents. It is what it is. We just have to live with it, and let's hope for the best. Thank you.
I think Frank, Frank, you want to comment?
Yeah.
Hold it now. Please, Frank has the floor.
Guys, please. Guys, please.
Yes, I would like to thank Ms. Zimba for the invite to go up to a well pad. I was previously in the past schedule, but for some reason or another, work commitments, I was never able to make it to there. So I definitely do want to visit a wellsite pad. In regards, as far as the problem with the noise, my fellow colleagues know who I am, what I'm about. I'm not a politician, I'm a problem solver. So we obviously have a problem there that we need to do a deep investigation into, and I'm all about taking corrective action to solving problems and then moving on to the next issue in our township. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. I'd just like to say that I've worked on the pads. I've been to the pads. I took an acceptance recently to go up there with Cecil Township Volunteer Fire Department. Went up there. I encourage everybody that has never been to a pad to at least go up and look, to at least go up and take the tour. They are offered. Well, they'll bring the residents up there. They want to show you guys what's going on. They want to show you what's working, what's not working. They're upfront and honest with you whenever you go up to it. If you go up and visit a well pad, they'll walk you over to any piece of equipment that's there, anything within safety measures. They'll show you what's going on with it. They'll explain why it is the way that it is. I'm over in Windsor Woods. I'm probably, I don't know, 1,500 feet from where the well pad is. I'm one of the closer houses. The stuff that's going on with the noise and, you know, all that, I don't see that where I'm at. I'm not saying that it doesn't happen. I don't want to deny anybody's claims here, because I fully believe that there are some spots that it does happen. I'm not here to say that it's not going on in residents that live closer than I do. I'm fairly close, and I don't see it personally. I can't say the same for everybody else. I will be taking up, you know, some of the closer residents to go over, you know, to be at their house and, you know, to go over for a visit. I will take them up on that offer. But like I said, I do encourage everybody to just be well-informed on everything that has to do with these well pads, not just whenever people come to the meetings and it's just a big battle for 90% of it. We saw a lot of that tonight. You have people that are pro-fracking, you have people that are against it. It's more about being well-informed and making your own decision rather than taking what everybody else says and hoping for the best. Sure. I do. I have twin 12-year-olds. I am concerned that that could be a possibility. I'm not saying that I'm okay with it or that I'm against it. All right. You're going to be able to make comments to Bill. He publishes his phone number. Wait, what?
He publishes his phone number?
Yeah, I mean, you'll be able to answer these people if they talk to you, right? Yeah, that's a personal conversation. It's not a place for the meeting here. But anyhow, no, I wanted to make a comment, too, about the suggestions about having well pads in the industrial zones. If you're aware, we have about eight villages that were built up around the mining businesses. And the mines were put in in the 1930s and the 40s and early 50s. At the time, the township had no zoning. In 1960, the prior board, which I wasn't a member of then, in the 60s, that board decided to adopt zoning for the township. And the law said that any municipality that adopts zoning, every parcel has to have a zoning designation. They can't leave any parcel unzoned. So that board at the time created industrial zones around all the mining, all the mining villages and all the mining operations. So even today, that's where you see all of our industrial zones. As Dan put up that map, and if you could put it up again, Dan? If you, if you look at it, all of the, like, around Muse and Southview and Gilmore and Hendersonville and Lawrence and Montour, all the villages are surrounded by industrial property. So it would be hard to just straight delegate drilling to the industrial zones. Wait, wait. And I know they say North Turbane allocates it to industrial zones, and Peters Township is in the industrial zones, but Peters Township, as far as I know, they don't have any villages. I think North Turbane has two or three villages. We have eight or nine of them, and they're spread all through the township. So I'm not saying we can't look at that, but if we do, we, by law, we can't ban drilling, and we can't zone them out of existence. So we have to find some kind of setback that works where they could drill in those industrial zones as you're asking for, but then we still have to protect those villages that are right up against those zones. So that's the issue why it's not proposed in this new ordinance right now. And again, you know, this board can reconsider that, and we can have our engineer work with us to see if we can find something that works for drilling in industrial zones and yet having safe setbacks for those residents in the villages. Sounds like a good idea.
So just a correction. National Number Three was first started in 1921, after 30s, in Muse.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Cindy, you want to answer some questions?
Do you want me to read them?
Yes, yes.
So the first question is, will the proposed ordinance require that Range only be provided, or I'm sorry, be approved for the wells they intend to drill in the near term, one to three years, and require that any wells planned for future, quote, rounds of drilling be approved prior to the planning commencement of drilling? So I think this question comes from, so just for example, the Connor Samuel pad, which hasn't even started, was approved in September of 2020. So what's kind of happening now is it's, they're applying for them, it's taking a long time, and then it's taking a long time between wells. So they did four at Augustine in 2021, or 2020, 2021. Now they're back doing five more, and they've already notified the township that they intend to come back for more. So the temporary nature of it isn't quite so temporary when it's spread over a 10-year period. Sorry, Gretchen, do you want to answer that?
Sure. So I know the board has considered this issue, and we've looked into ways to kind of address this concern. I think the focus is on the number of well pads that are approved when they come for, with their application. with their application for approval. So there's a maximum number of wells that can be, that the board approved. They don't drill them all at the same time. I'm not sure that we can regulate when they're drilling all the wells. They certainly can't drill more wells than were approved. We will look more into that, whether there is anything we can do to restrict when they are coming back and re-drilling or phasing of drilling. But, you know, that's one of those difficult areas where we might be getting into the how.
But we are.
But we also, another way that we attempted to address this in the current ordinance is to add some time measurements, so some indicators of when they have to start from when the approval was given. That's always an issue when it comes to land use. And there are provisions in our ordinance, our existing ordinance, that apply to all development that say, once you get that approval, it expires unless you do something within a certain time. So we tried to modify the language in the oil and gas portion of it to try to capture this issue. I'm happy to look at it more, but.
Just for a frame of reference, they applied for Connor Samuel and Bernard Schultz the day we announced our last time we were considering the ordinance change. So it was intentional to be grandfathered into the old ordinance that they liked, and that's what we're trying to prevent from happening in the future. Does the proposed ordinance include the requirement that Range Resources notify nearby residents of disruptive activities such as flaring, moving in and out of large equipment like sound walls or rigs, the commencement of fracking, which will result in large amounts of additional truck traffic, testing of gas transmission lines, et cetera, as well as any potential emergencies at the site through an emergency notification system?
So to answer the last part of that, in terms of an emergency notification system, no. In terms of increased notice provisions, yes. There are multiple provisions within Section 3 of the ordinance of requiring different types of notice to different groups of people in advance of certain activities. Some of those notices are to residents within a certain proximity. For example, any development activity, there is a requirement to notify each property owner within 4,000 feet, and there's a list of things that they need to do. But then there are others, there are a series of notices within this section. For example, before there is fracking or flaring activities, the operator shall notify the township and the zoning officer seven days prior, as well as notify 911, I think, to avoid the issue we heard tonight about 911 not even being aware that the activities were happening. So there are more notice provisions. I can say this board has considered, and we did have discussions several years ago, with Range actually, about emergency notification system. And the consensus then at least was that there was a high probability of confusion by trying to add some additional layer of notification in addition to the notification that currently exists, you know, such as 911 and the preparedness plan that they have to abide by. So I hope that answers that question. So additional notices, yes, to different groups of people, depending on what the notice is, but some kind of township-wide emergency notification system, no.
Based on the proposed ordinance, how will potential noise violations be measured and reported? How will we ensure that violation can be captured and they don't, quote, "turn it down" before someone can take a measurement? Or is there any option for permanent noise monitoring equipment to be installed at the nearest property line?
So the changes to the noise provision and the noise complaint process is that it is still complaint-driven. If there is a noise complaint, then there is a requirement within 24 hours to set up continuous monitoring at various locations and report back to the township within a certain time period. That's how it's being addressed in the current ordinance. Of course, the township can also do its own monitoring, but in terms of what the operator would be required to do, it would be to provide that data. Now, if they are not in compliance with the ordinance based on the results of those sound monitorings, then that is then a notice of violation and you move to the notice of violation section. These are zoning violations, which are governed by the MPC, and there are certain things the township can do and there's a process that needs to go through if there is a violation. But that's the progression of how a noise complaint would take place.
I actually found in the Connor Samuel testimony, sorry, is my microphone on? That they acknowledge, we could potentially put a meter up, not obviously during construction, but once again, I guess, once the air rig arrives, we could try to get some baseline readings. And then he goes on to explain, and Gretchen, I'll share this with you, that, so, Mr. McKean was asking, so again, Mr. McKean, we have already experienced loud noise from Augustine from the beginning, from the onset of construction through production. Why not include sound monitoring? Well, again, we hadn't been asked to do it at this point, so this, I don't know, again, during the construction, during the building of pad. Hold on, let me see if I can find it. But basically, he says in here that they could do continuous monitoring, but they only do it, it's only complaint-driven now in our current ordinance, and then there's no real follow-up for it.
Yeah, there's a, right, there are studies that are required and then there's complaint-driven process. We can explore, if the majority of the board wants to explore that, we can explore trying to add some provisions for monitoring during certain time periods or continuous.
Right. Sorry. Does the ordinance include any protection for potential mine subsidence issues? Section 11 geophysical exploration requires them to post a $1 million bond for any damages as a result of seismic testing. Is that enough?
So, you know, you're always, first of all, the operator is always responsible for its activities. So there's a combination of protections in this ordinance to protect the township. First of all, the operator has to indemnify, defend and hold harmless the township from any of its activities. There are insurance provisions and we increase those insurance amounts, obviously, which adds another layer of protection. This bonding provision is a different source of protection that we added in the seismic testing provision of that. You know, you try to get it right, right? You try to balance the interests and get the right amount of protections for the township. Those are the three places where there are protections. Mine subsidence per se, I think those three protections give you protection for something like mine subsidence. There's actually mine subsidence issues, I actually just saw today, there's like $244 million coming to the Commonwealth for additional mine subsidence funds relief. So there's, if there's a mine subsidence issue, there are other buckets where there are protections for something like that. And I think that's the best way to answer it. One, they are always responsible for whatever damage they cause. We've tried to add additional layers to add protection to the township, insurance, bonding, et cetera.
How are violations such as not using, I'm sorry. How are violations such as not using the approved route and not traveling the route during school transportation hours going to be enforced?
So again, this is a zoning ordinance. Violations are complaint-driven. If there is a complaint and there is a determination of a violation, there is a notice of violation process. That's what's required by the MPC when you have zoning violations now. Query whether there are other ordinances that might apply to a particular instance. I'm not sure about this truck route instance, but obviously, if there is a violation of any road laws or anything else, if they are violating something, a non-zoning provision, those typically have their own enforcement processes. So if it's something that is governed by the police powers or the general powers of the township, and there's a different ordinance that they're violating, there might be another process. But in terms of the violation of a zoning ordinance, it is a notice of violation process. The township can always go seek equitable relief from a court. There's other things they can do if there is something that rises to a level that they think warrants some kind of other intervention that's not being resolved by a violation process.
How did the township determine the setback distance of 1,000 feet? Tom kind of already explained that. Can you guarantee the safety of the residents at that distance?
So again, I think we go back to the balancing and trying to find the right place and space for this. I think the board's been considering it and struggling with what the right answer is. Should it be zone-based? Should it be setback-based? Should it be, you know, I just heard maybe a combination of the two. Maybe it's zone-based plus additional setbacks if you're abutting a village. There are, you know, there's a bunch of different ways to skin the cat when it comes to zoning. And this board has options available to it. I think they're trying to get that right answer.
This is the last one I have. Is there anything in the ordinance that requires the wells to be capped and the site to be cleaned up within a specific time period upon completion of activities at the site?
So from regulatory agencies, yes, they have to follow any capping and closing procedures. What we require in the ordinance is notification to the township of those processes that are governed by those regulatory agencies. I think that's appropriate, and that's the extent of what we can do as it relates to that area.
That's all that I was copied on, so that's all I have.
I think everybody had it. I think everybody had a chance to make some comments. We did learn a lot. I think so did you. We're going to have another hearing on May 8th at 6:00 PM here, and you're invited again. And I think you might see some changes on the proposed ordinance that we have based on, and it might be zoning, it might be like Gretchen talked about. We're looking at it. We still will talk to Range because it still sometimes becomes a negotiating process and that's our goal. Yes. So again.
Just because we're running out of time. We'll have more May 8th when we come back.
We have sense. All right, let us work on it.
I think there's enough, I think we're out there in the community enough that we're getting a sense of kind of what's going on and what the pulse is. Now whether everybody.
But understand that the sentiment of the community, we're still bound by the laws of the Commonwealth and the MPC. And if they say we can't zone it out of existence, we can't. And no matter how much you want us to, we're not going to break the law.
When people tell you it matters who you elect in local government positions, believe them. At our level, it doesn't really matter what political party you're affiliated with because 99% of the national politics we don't deal with, but we deal with the sewage stuff and the cell phone towers and the turnpike and this. And so talk to the people that are running for office. It makes a difference.
So. Yes, so there are multiple layers there. I mean, you can always file a complaint with the township to have the zoning officer look into a violation. Yeah, you can call the township. You can always do that. There were, and I believe still are, a complaint process where there are numbers that the operator has to provide to answer questions or deal with complaints. So there are different layers of where you can, yeah, if you know more detail.
So you can, on the township's website, there's an actual form that you can fill out that will go to an email. I wouldn't necessarily do that, but there's also on there all of our email addresses. There's also contact information for Range. If I were you and I were the one complaining, I would notify both parties. I would reach out to Range so that they're on notification. There's a 1-800 number on there and there's also a contact on there. But I would also send all of us information too, so that it's in two places. That's my advice. He has, there's somebody over there that has a question.
Yes, sir. I'm going to speak up so everybody can hear you. If we get all the information we want at the time and we present it on a May 8th meeting, we would schedule, we could schedule, we'll vote for that at our next business meeting. We don't vote at any hearings like we're having tonight. We have to vote at a public meeting. And if we're satisfied and we basically have covered all the bases that we think we can to have the balance that we've talked about, then we're going to vote on it. We will work on the comments we got though. Like I said, the ordinance you've seen that's proposed that went to the Washington County Planning Commission and our Planning Commission, it may change somewhat. We may add things and take things out based on comments.
And I just wanted to add on to that, you know, we're trying to be transparent and provide everybody with the updated information on this ordinance and changes. So if the board makes some additional changes after tonight and before the next hearing, that ordinance will be posted. It will be re-advertised. Even if we don't have to re-advertise it, I think we're going to, you know. Typically, you have to re-advertize if there are substantial changes, but not minor changes. I think my recommendation is to just re-advertize the whole thing before the May hearing and therefore you'll be able to view the additional changes to the ordinance before that hearing and then you can come prepared to ask any questions that are specific to those, you know, the ordinance and the changes that have been made since the first hearing.
We'll try to keep you updated on it as we add changes. I'm going to have one more person since she's standing, and then we're going to close this hearing and move on to the.
Thanks, Tom. Patricia Walker, 1860 Rising Road, McDonald, PA. There's a lot of upset here this evening on both sides. And I think that we, as a community, have to work together to not put the industry out of Cecil Township, but to also address everyone's concern as far as safety for your children. And I just want to go on record to say that, that we all have to work together so that we can keep the industry in our township, but also the safety concerns that everyone has voiced this evening is a legitimate concern.
I think that is our intent.
But I do have to say, it was just mentioned that watch who you vote for. And I actually voted against my, across party lines, for someone that had my vote.
We normally don't get involved in politics in our hearings or meetings.
I'm not going to, I just want to say, I just want to say though, that when someone changes halfway through the term, it kind of muddies the water a little bit. But thank you for your time.
We will continue to work with the industry and we'll hope we have something.
Thank you for your time this evening.
That we can all work together on. Having said that, we're going to pause this hearing and we will reconvene on May 8th at 6:00 PM. Thank you. What's your phone number?
Huh?
I'll send you his cell phone number right now.
Oh, okay. Perfect. I'll call him tomorrow. I didn't want to catch you.
Out of here now.
Yeah, okay, thanks.